Have camping lawns, this has some kind of duration or what the rules are. So we're kind of befuddled.
Yeah, this issue that Mr. Hensel brought up is kind of the tip of the iceberg.
But the distinction that I see is that the issue we're talking about here is they're camping without the consent of the landowner or the ownership of the property. They're squatting on private property.
What Moore is talking about is family women who are home ready and ready.
And there's some overlap, but I think it's a different issue than what this is. But I think it would be worth exploring, at least looking at what other counties are doing.
I think so. Other questions? Yes, do you want to go anywhere with this?
No, I think we need to explore it. I mean, we have a...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
There we go. I'm your lawyer.
You keep reminding her today.
Yeah, so I got a duty of candor too. And that duty of candor is that I think he was agendized in a nice polite way. But I think that the continuing input that I receive as the attorney for this body is that, as Mr. Egan correctly identified it, there's a magnet. A magnet attracts folks to the community that we then see at the river, that we see crawling out of the wells. And I know that the social service agencies see many of these folks, but I think it's important to call precisely for what it is. And I think that's where my duty of candor kicks in, is that I'm reluctant to identify the magnet, but I think there is some consensus amongst us what precisely that is. And I see that as a good and valuable service that's provided to folks that otherwise need it, but it has a serious consequence to this community, and folks have noted it. You know, we recently saw the fire at the barn, and that was just one event, but there are other consequences and other costs to our community. And I guess the question is, is to what degree do we... I don't know that this entity here has any authority to prevent it. I think it is essentially a private service that's being offered, and for many whose values support that, a good thing. And for many who... It's a controversial issue, but I don't think that I could let this conversation go by without being blunt with you and tell you that the magnet that we have come to know is Crossroads is attracting folks to the community. That wouldn't otherwise be here. Simply put, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Johnson. Jeff, over here.
Why don't we just say, first of all, is there any one organization I don't think serves the interest and may or may not be one of the contributing factors? And I would remind the board that the county actually has several contracts where we contract with Crossroads to provide services. So I think you need to keep in mind that they act in some respects as our own agents, and not just us, but other forces within the community. But I think in terms of the camping issue, what we have seen that has driven our water situation to a drought, I think also contributes to this. And I think, you know, a couple good strong aluminum years and the cold temperate climate that we receive from time to time, we haven't seen in quite a while, can do a lot to affect the desire to camp.
In a year like '93, people disappeared.
And, you know, one of the issues that has come across over the years in terms of dealing with, you know, the families following inmates to the prison and so forth, that has always been a concern expressed by some. And the difference is that 4200 elevation is a lot less inviting than the temperature requirements of 100 feet or 500 feet, where the more urban areas are populated. And so cold does play a major factor in terms of, not year-round, but, you know, when you have winters as we've had in recent years where it has not been as cold and as dramatic, I think has encouraged more people to want to hang around in environments and areas that maybe is not the best. And so all I can say, just like you're waiting for the drop to break, it'll have other consequences as well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Unless, I missed something. I didn't hear any words to board a moment ago on this.
Mr. Chairman, I think that there were members of the public that showed today who were commenting.
Yes, okay, good, thank you. Any comment in the public? Seeing none, councilor on the ground.
I...
Our sheriff had a comment.
I have one. This is, it's a complicated issue.
It is.
It's very complicated. And it's not just in Lassen County, or not just in Susanville, it's everywhere right now. And if you guys wanted to take steps forward towards trying to identify what our, the issue is and what potential solutions are, then, you know, I'd be willing to participate in something like that. I think that'd be the best way to look forward, something in a working group, if you guys chose. If not, that's fine too. But I just wanted to say, it's not as simple as enforcement, you know? There's no easy answer to this. And if you really wanted to try to take some steps towards resolving some issues we're seeing, we're seeing, and we'd have to put some effort and work together.
I still don't see you did with enforcement and orders that you would have to enforce or enforcing the law as it is, as these people are on private property.
Yeah, the hard part is you kick them off, where do they go? You kick them off one of these private property, they're going to feel so bad.
They're going to be back soon.
Hundred yards down.
They're going to be back.
Just go a hundred yards down.
Yep.
Well, the intended consequences of AB 109 and Prop 47 and other laws like that there also drive them to figure it out. Maybe the way we could approach this, Mr. Chairman, is maybe the board can constitute a task force and, you know, bring together different parties that might have an interest to study, examine, and look at what the alternatives are, and maybe come back at some future point with a recommendation or a report. I think rather than trying to just take little shots, you know, hot shots from here to there to try to resolve the issue, you know, maybe the best way to do is to, you know, that's kind of what we've done from time to time. That's how we tackled the townhill issue where we were having the trucks crashing and stuff. And it was a group of folks who were committed to try to find a solution, and they spent three, four, six months, very intense, met if not weekly, every other week or so, and dissected the issue and came back with a variety of recommendations. And I think the things offering there is an example of that. And invite these other groups, the church groups and the Crossroads and Lassen Family Services. There are a lot of agencies out there that interact with our social services department, try to really quantify what is the issue and how best to resolve it.
Okay, Mr. Egan.
I think the attraction that is resulting in this illegal camping in the county is wholly located within the city of Susanville. To that extent, we certainly need to have, I think, buy-in from the city, or in fact, I'd like to see, you know, leadership from the city in terms of dealing with the issue, because I think it is predominantly a city issue. It's been pushed out to the county because of the city's policies, and I think we're dealing with the...
Well, if you use the task, if you use the task force approach, it's exactly, you know, the truck crashing in town was really a city issue, but it was stimulated by activity coming into the city. So it was basically a cross-platform opportunity for all the interests to work it out.
Dean?
Jared had a meeting at eleven, as we had believed, but he expressed interest in, because it is a problem that goes across.
It's not a county problem, it's not Samhain problem, it's a community problem. No, we need to make sure.
You have a board, it is a county. Why don't we...
I'd suggest you, somebody from the supervisor end of the task force, see what he can do with this.
Yeah, for Tom, Ian, Richard, Dean, and Jeff, get together and set up whatever you want to do and bring it back. That works.
Yeah, I just want to say, I have a business that's close to Crossroads, and I don't blame it all on Crossroads.
Would you take your name?
I'm Jeff Muesch. And basically, I see it every day down there. I'm real close to the next block up. What I see, I mean, I've seen drug dealers walking up the alley with to-go boxes of food and throwing out what they didn't like. I see every day around lunchtime, I see people with cell phones and cigarettes, they go down that way, come back. I see a lot of people that hang around that normally wouldn't, because they can go down there and get clothes, a shower. I don't think they regulate down there well enough. They say they drug test, but that's only for the people that are staying with them. I also know of one incident, there's a guy that comes up from Chico once a month, he spends two days, they pack him up with food and clothes, and he goes back and lives in his apartment. And he does that every month. So I know the AB 109 has changed everything. I've seen big change since that happened. But what happens is, they find a place to eat and get clothes down there, and they hang out longer. You can't really point the finger totally at Crossroads, but I think they need to regulate what's going on down there better. That's just, I see it every day, and I see new faces come and go. Yeah, it's, I have a lot of problems with them. You know, it's a can of worms, it really is. I mean, I don't know the solution, but I think one of them is they need to regulate what they're doing down there. I know if it was Salvation Army, they got a tight ship. Those people don't square their act away, they're down the road. They don't just give them everything, they make them work. So, I mean, I don't know. I think it's a big part of the problem. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you for your comment. Appreciate it.
All right.
When I was working, it was also a situation that the Lassen National Forest was dealing with too, and it might be occurring on BLM lands as well. So it's not just within the immediate vicinity of the city of Susanville, but for those folks who have some kind of transportation, it's right out here on the, over by Roxy Picanum in that area along Willard Creek Road. So they have a 14-day stay limit, but as somebody mentioned, they just move a mile further down the road. So a collaborative discussion with other entities like the BLM and the Forest Service, I think, would be helpful in finding a good solution.
Okay, thank you. Let's, we're going to run out of time, if we're going to put that together and work with Dean and Jared.
I'd like to include the police chief.
Police chief. And you...
Hell, officer.
May I, do you have a comment? Do you want to be on the committee?
I want to be on the committee.
Okay, you all want to be on the committee?
Then I don't want to be on the committee.
You know, I think as we put it together too, it would be helpful to have private sector folks in the community, and I would say if they're interested in serving and being involved, it would be a good connection, I think, and an opportunity, so.
Don't scare off our public. The government speaker gets around.
But he raised some very significant points, and I think he would be a prominent asset. And that's one thing I know with the Town Hill Safety Task Force is that we had private sector businesses that were involved, along with Caltrans and City and the County and others. So I think that's kind of the way to pull it together.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that then. Richard, I got it. Okay, we're going to, we'll be done here. We'll move on to our other talk, public hearing. We opened a public hearing at 11:16, and staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Laurie, and Phil, and services. Today, before you have a petition for partial cancellation of the Williamson Act contract. Essentially, we're here because the technical advisory committee did approve the lot line condition that the board allow and make the findings for a partial cancellation of the Williamson Act contract. Specifically, the application was made by C.R. Pacific and was filed, and the application number is AA 62, and it affects parcel 109 142. Final cancellation requires that the board make one of the above findings, or one of the findings I'll tell you about. And that's pursuant to Government Code 51282A, which is causing a certificate of tentative cancellation to be reported. So as I said, SBI did make the application, which requests that the board consider partial cancellation of the Williamson Act. And the petition for cancellation was submitted to satisfy, as I said earlier, a lot line adjustment request. Cancellation of the Williamson Act is being requested because the applicant is proposing parcel sizes that would not meet the requirements of Williamson Act. So they're smaller parcels than are required by that act, so they would need this cancellation in order to perfect the lot line adjustment. The sizes are, after final approval, the lot line adjustment would create parcels substandard, as I said, and that is why we are here today. Upon tentative approval of the petition for cancellation, the clerk of the board would record the office, at the Office of Lassen County, record a certificate of tentative cancellation, which shall set forth the name of the landowner requesting the cancellation and the fact that the certificate of cancellation of the contract will be issued. In order to do this, there's a variety of different findings, which are in your staff report and staff report. I have to apologize, it's long and lengthy, because when we start talking about the Williamson Act, it gets long and lengthy. But essentially, the findings are that, one, that the cancellation of land on which the notice of non-renewal has been served pursuant to 51245. So they haven't done that yet. If the board was going to favor this application, they would do that concurrently. Two, that the cancellation is not likely to result in the removal of adjacent lands from agricultural use. Three, the cancellation is for an alternative use, which is consistent with the applicable provisions of the general plan. And fourth, that the cancellation will not result in a contiguous pattern of urban development. And fifth, that there is no approximate non-contracted lands which is both available and suitable for the use which they're proposing. So staff analyzed those findings, we see where the board can make all those findings. Specifically, the lot line adjustment is, you have SBI, then you have Hat Creek Construction. Hat Creek Construction has the ward pit, they've exhausted most of the material there. The material goes in the direction of the SBI lines, and that's why they're proposing that. So that specific point lends credibility to these findings. And all the other ones that led up to that are pretty clear, that they're not going to be inconsistent with those findings. So with that, I see that Perry Thompson is here from Hat Creek. I don't see anything from SBI. So with that said, I would, I would go back to one of the findings. Could you make your statement here? That when you look at the recommendations, you have one through six.
Which page do you?
I'm on the very front of the staff report, under recommendations. So you're going to receive the petition, you're going to receive the report which you just did, you're going to hold a public hearing, and then you're going to make one of the following findings. And one is that the cancellation is consistent with purposes of the above chapter, and E, that the cancellation is in the public interest. Being that SBI is not here today, I would recommend that if the board favors this, that they do option B, which is in the public interest. And I think having aggregate available for jobs within the county serves the public interest. So that would be the finding that I would recommend. If SBI was here to make their case, then he could probably make both, but seeing that they're not, I would say, I would recommend the...
Yeah, my one question about this whole thing is how it affected you guys, Perry, and it seems like it's a positive impact on your operation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Let's stay with the process of the public hearing. Any questions by the board on the staff report? Any questions from the public on the staff report? I'm sure there's been any new information coming in?
No, sir.
Nothing? Anybody wish to speak against this process or this? Anybody wish to speak against? Anybody wish to speak for this project?
Hi, I'm Perry Thompson. Thank you guys for your time today. We are trying, and they covered it great in the staff report, but we are trying to make sure we don't run out of aggregates. This is a very important county, it's a very important location for us. Roughly, you know, five years ago, about eighty-five, ninety percent of our business was out of Lassen County. And now approximately seventy percent of our business is done out of Lassen County. Not necessarily in Lassen County, but that pit makes it viable to where we can, we can hit projects in both our county and any of products in Lassen County. And I think it's been a tremendous economic help for this county. I know that we've employed tons of people here in the local community, and we're still looking for more. So, you know, many great people looking for jobs, we send them our way. But we certainly appreciate the support we've gotten here, and it's been a very positive thing, and we want to continue that.
Thank you very much, Perry.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be in for or against? See nobody, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing at 11:24.
I have a question. So we're taking this course now to the Williamson Act. Do they have to wait 10 years before they can start getting gravel, or as soon as it's out, they can?
The difference would be...
That would be a non-renewal.
Non-renewal versus cancellation. Cancellation would be an immediate action, and renewal, as you said, takes nine years.
My question for you, if I'm correct, with the cancellation, you have to pay back?
Yeah.
If you're not...
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a penalty, if you will, for getting out. Obviously, Hat Creek and SBI have looked at that and are...
Everybody will be coming up with a check.
Somebody's going to produce some money, or it won't happen.
It shouldn't be too specific, I would say, that I mean, they do what they want to do. Okay, any other questions? Do you have any more to play this board?
I just have one thing, it has nothing to do with America, whether they get out or get in, but it's a matter of form, you know? Like, it's totally perplexed, and this is, I guess, the English language is baffling, because it caught my attention, because I've always...
What page are we on?
It's on every page.
Whatever.
I've always spelled the word cancellation with two L's. C-A-N. And there's no dollar sign. I apologize. Yeah, and also, I saw, geezer's a typo, because it's got cancellation with one L, and it's like nine times on just the front page alone. And when you get to even the legal documents, it's cancellation with one L title, but when you talk about it in the body of the thing, it's got two L's, and then it goes back to one L down here in the IDU, which is the money certifying thing, and, I mean, throughout. And so I thought, well, that's crazy, so I thought I caught him with a big mistake. But when you look at the word, both words are correct, and only in the United States do we use the one L version. Everybody else in the world uses two L's, according to the Google line. But anyway, I'm thinking to myself, that's like totally crazy, we've never seen anything like it before.
I apologize. I wasn't a, I aren't an English maker. But I know what you're saying, and I think it shows that, how much you depend on spell check, because if it finds that something's right either way...
Yeah, it's, I mean, but to me, I think from a person who's reading, consistency could be of value. So I don't care, if either one is adopted, that's fine, but it would be nice to be consistent one way or the other, but to go, I mean, it changes back and forth a half a dozen times on one page. It's like, I've never seen the English language be more screwed up than that.
If the chair would like, I could agenda for a future meeting with discussion of which version of the cancellation.
Well, I'm really glad that Jack Hanson's not sitting on the board any longer, he's sitting in the audience, because he would be pulling a few hairs and stuff that happens. Because he was always the grand old spelling Nazi on the board. I was going to say, Jack, this one here, I just say, I'm Galilei surrender.
I've got you.
He's got more hair than anybody in.
I know.
All right, let's get back to our deal here. Much pleasure, you know, board, we have a motion to approve this cancellation.
Under...
I'm going to spell it.
I'm going to refund the cancellation as, you know, best public interest.
Which, which version of cancellation?
It's either, it's either one, two L's.
Either or.
Either or.
Number four is two L's, and number...
I know.
Five is one L.
It's like that throughout the whole thing.
We're going to kick out the bills.
So the second, is the, is the motion that the cancellation, that the board's finding that the cancellation's in the public interest, consistent with four B on the staff report, and also that there be reported a notice of tentative cancellation?
Yes.
Take my second there.
Would you second any more discussion? I'm sure the board...
Supervisor Chapman.
I'll go with two L's.
Supervisor...
I'll go with L's.
Supervisor...
Aye.
Supervisor Handel.
Aye.
Supervisor Vire.
I have one L.
I think earlier, we were the reprimanded not to have fun in this.
Yeah.
You've got to wash your mouth out.
Yeah.
All right. I think everybody, we're just finishing, if we move on to our next agenda, which I think is H...
Seventy-seven.
H, I am doing services, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, we got to take care of air, not yet.
Well, we're taking care of ourselves. There's some... Let me just, I, I'm correct. But I would just, before I do the staff report, remark that every few years, they're going to probably find more and more basins that they want to manage. So this is just a prelude to states involved with the Water Management Act. So I'm going to try to limit the acronym, because there's a lot of them. But as the board knows, and most of the public, in September of last year, California enacted some legislation that was, was huge. Before that, we had very limited groundwater management. And as I said, after that, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SIGMA, was passed, it's pretty much been a game changer for California. And really, at the moment, it only has to do with medium and high priority basins. And for the most part, Lassen County has neither, except for one at the Big Valley. And in the staff report, it goes through why California passed this law and what the goals are, and I'll, unless the board wants me to go through that, I'll dispense with the motive. And then we'll get into how DWR ranked that basin in Big Valley. And, you know, for any of you that know, the county has taken issue with how they ranked it. But that is, given the timeframe that we have to work in and comply with the law, a sort of a side issue that we're fighting with DWR. And so we have taken the tact that we will do everything that we can to be in compliance by the end of the year, by the timelines, other timelines that are in your staff report. So as I said, within Lassen County, Big Valley Basin has been identified as a medium priority and will require a GSA. And I'll get back to one when I introduce that acronym. But, so you have SIGMA, and then groundwater, let's see, within...
Sustainable.
Sustainable agency. So someone's going to be that agency. And in some jurisdictions, there's probably a lot of wrangling and fighting over who that's going to be. I don't know that that's going to happen here. But anyway, the GSE, GSA, and there will be a GSP, a plan that goes along with this. And those are mandatory. And so as I said, we're, if you look at the timelines on page three, by June 2017, they'll be done raking all the basins. In that same timeframe, the GSAs must be established, and they must have a plan. And by January 31st, 2020, all the GSPs must be implemented for medium and high priority basins. So who's going to be the agency? That's the question. And staff looked at it, and we came up with three different options, one being sort of the private land option. Within the county, there is already... Within the county, there is already the Modoc-Lassen Flood Control District, which our outside counsel has reviewed and looked at, and says that it does qualify to be the agency. And so that's already in place, that's...